Well, thank you, everybody, for coming to today's discussion on residential ownership options. AKA condominiums is another term or a form of common ownership. Intermittently with the with this new option under state law, RCW sixty-four ninety. I would like to acknowledge that this is a planning commission meeting. We don't have a majority of planning commission members here, but it is still able to conduct the meeting. And it will be recorded and shared with the planning commissioners who are not currently on attendance, in attendance. I wanted to start by talking about a handout that we provided at the festival, meaning the engagement night. It's the conversion of what residential dwellings into condominiums. We tried to do as a question ask frequently asked questions format, question answer format. And then I did receive some questions from Curval, Skinnerland, so I will try my best to walk through those as well. Overall, the state law has changed in several different ways. Some of it impacting larger jurisdictions, but some of it just impacting all jurisdictions. And the items impacting all jurisdictions are include this idea that individual units can be can be subdivided out and sold as individual units. One second.
You muted yourself. Lilith, you know you're muted?
I did that on purpose. I'm trying to help Sharon Waters getting into the evening, so I'm sorry about that. One moment. Thank you. All right, everybody. Thank you so much. Bye. Welcome Sharon to the meeting. We're delighted to have you here. If anybody else out there is stuck, do have them call or email me. I can look at both and we'll get everybody on board. Like I was stating, I wanted to start today's meeting with kind of the overview of a handout of what does residential conversion into condominiums mean and some frequently asked questions. So I want, because some people are visual, I want to share my screen and show that document. But I will walk us through it too, so. Basically, does converting a dwelling into condominiums change the look, density, or function of the building? It does not. And some folks have been confused because when they think of condominiums, they think of bigger buildings, like apartment complex that has a lot of units in it. It doesn't have to be that. And that's not what we're looking at with this addition. It won't change what's allowed in that zoning district. So if the zoning allows for a single family home and a residential accessory dwelling unit, and then the owner wants to condominiumize, those two units could be sold independent of each other. So in one case, you would have most likely residential home occupied by the owner and the accessory dwelling unit rented out month to month, thirty day rental. That would probably be a fairly common scenario, although the owner could live in a smaller ADU unit or the owner could live in a different unit offsite. But irregardless, you still have two homes, two structures. And if they were to go through this condominiumization process, then they would still have those two homes and those two structures on the same parent parcel. That would be the boundaries on the land that they own when they built those structures. And I would, for today's purposes, call that the parent parcel. That doesn't change. If they come in and say, oh, I want to add on to my condo, I'm going to put on the front porch. They have to modify all their condo documents. They have to go through the building permit process. They still have to be in conformance to the overall parent parcel and the zoning regulations. The proposal that is being submitted talks about being exempt from things like setbacks because when you're creating the actual condo, it becomes the footprint of that residential structure. And of course, that footprint is definitely not going to need any setbacks if that becomes the the lot that's for sale. But to the parent parcel, it's unchanged. It does mean all setbacks. So that can be a little challenging to picture. If I can here in a moment, I'll show an example of that. Condos are just a form of ownership. No change to the look, the density, or the function of the building. How are condominiums managed? Most often, they're managed by the owners association and a board. This state law does allow for condos to be managed by a third party. It would be reasonable to think over time, this is just a new business model for property management, where they could be managing multiple small condo units, and that could help with consistency of management between, you know, smaller units. But smaller units also mean that they're easier to manage typically. So that's not going to be a requirement, but they can use an agent or a third party to manage the the condos. Are there any questions on what I've talked about so far? I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand or unmute, so I'm going to move on. How are condominiums?
Lilith, I do, sorry. Maybe it's just, let me turn my video on. Maybe it's just me, but I still don't understand the setback issues. And if everyone else understands that, I don't want to spend time here, but the the code language changes proposed by Prusak Association looked like they had put waivers to setbacks, et cetera. So I'm not quite understanding what you just said, that they they applied to the footprint, because wouldn't that be the same as a setback for a single family home?
No, I mean, I'll take a minute with it for sure. I'm going to pull up this unrelated site plan as an example.
I just pulled up the piece of paper, and what it says is conformity with all applicable zoning requirements. And then the new addition is provided that per division under LMC seventeen dot ten, et cetera, no minimum lot size, setback requirements, or density restrictions in the underlying zoning designation shall apply. So that's pretty confusing.
Now, the image is going to be slightly blurry, but I think you'll be able to look at it. I'll share and I'll share one more time. This is a site plan that shows an existing building and a proposed one. And assume that they need all of the setbacks. The dotted line is your current parcel layer. And I would call that the parent parcel. If they were to condominiumize, the condo process takes these footprints for each building and says, this is the sellable portion of property. In other words, that becomes for the accessory purposes, almost the the land that's being sold, and it has the structure on it. So the remainder of it becomes the common area or the open space is often used. But a common area is a better term because it incorporates other functions of that space, which could include parking. So in any case, when you condominiumize, nothing changes. And if they want to come back and expand the building, say, add this little bump out, that review, that lot coverage, all of the standards of the zoning are going to be reviewed over and against the overall parent parcel. But when you create the condominium, you're creating this essentially mini parcel that is only the building, and therefore, it would never ever be able to meet setbacks if you had a setback requirement because it's right up against the building. And so whereas it might look a little funky to see that in code, it's not changing anything in comparison to the parent parcel. Does that helpful, Curval?
I'm sorry. I must be dumb because I don't really understand it. If they want to bump something out and it encroaches into say, it's a ten-foot setback from the property line, what you're saying is that would be denied?
If they wanted to bump this, say, can you see my cursor moving?
Well, say.
I'm sorry.
Just if they, if they say the setback from the, that the zoning currently requires is a ten-foot setback from the property line. If they wanted to expand and go into that ten-foot setback, they would have to get a variance, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just wasn't clear why the applicant was asking for this change in the language. And I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it because everyone else may get it. So I, I'll just table it for now.
It's a good question, Curval, and I'll try and make sure that I have that clear moving forward in the kind of a documented format. Stacy, you have a question or a comment?
Kind of the same question or line of thinking as Curval that, actually, let me put my hand down now. That I would assume that these condo developers could still ask for lot line DB or variations, like there's the house on Titus that's a zero lot line that was approved through a variance. And therefore, these condos would also be able to ask for those kind of variances as well. Is that accurate? Or is there anything to?
Well, our current code does allow for a zero lot line development. You have to, to get a variance, you have to show a hardship outside your control, and it goes to a variance examiner. It's not very easy. We try not to make it easy because it's a variance. It's going against the vision of what the community expected for that area. So we do regulate those pretty tightly. And I don't know about the one on Titus, but there is a zero lot line, a couple of developments in town, and because they were legally created structures, yeah, they could come in and get those binding site, or get the condo provisions replaced if we adopted this.
Right. They would be held to the same variation process as the houses today. I didn't know that zero lot line was the default building code in Leavenworth. Is that what you said?
Not default, but we have it. We have it as an option.
As an option through a variance, or just, just like an option that you can apply for?
An option you can apply for.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. Okay, good to know. But anyways, yeah, so that, just to add on to Curval's question, that would be my my thinking there too.
Okay, great. I'm going to try and pull that example together. So we've talked about function of condos, how condos are managed. You know, one of the questions that came up early on is how can neighbors ensure that the property will be well maintained? Under the state law, the owners association is required to maintain all common areas. And under state law, they have provisions in there. There's emergency. They can jump in and get work done without, you know, maybe a vote of all the parties. So any emergencies that could be taken care of, to the extent that they're violating city policy call requirements for maintenance, which right now is pretty much just fire safety issues. The homeowners association would be liable to maintain those, so we have the same teeth with a single family home and an ADU as we would with a condo association. We have the same rules and regulations and the same processes for enforcement. Why do they require a binding site plan? And they can be done through a subdivision process as well. We want to do the binding site plan review. A lot of communities don't require it. Condominium creation is done at the state level, and they don't even need to notify the city. But here in Leavenworth, we already have a process that says, no, we want to review those. And our primary reason for doing that has been to ensure that parking is maintained. But we can use this process also to make sure that city utility services are accounted for, easements, and, you know, gives us an opportunity to review their maintenance of common areas. And what happens if there's only two units? I can touch on this from the beginning because this might be something that happens. Two of the four units might be common, or three to six, ones where once the city has adopted the state requirement for two accessory dwelling units. But in the meantime, these smaller associations, like I said, they can be managed by a third party, which might help, or they can just be small enough to be managed on their own. And either case, there's a whole set of rules and regulations under the state law, how they're established, that they'll put together and how are code enforcement issues addressed? Touch on this above as well. We have the exact same tools as a city for code enforcement, whether it's a condo association, or whether it's a standard historical, you know, single-family residential lot. The property owners are responsible for any violations that occur on the property. If the violation occurs in the common area, say, an RV parked in a long location, the front yard setback. We pull that document and we say, yep, that's the common area that goes to the homeowners association. We notify the homeowners association, we notify the individual owners in that development, most likely will get notified at the same time because I like to make sure everybody gets the same information. But under our code specifically, only the homeowner has to, or the property owner has to be notified, which would be the association. That would be the benefit of a smaller association because it would go to all the association members, which might be all the parties involved. Then if they're noncompliant, we take enforcement against them. Through our normal legal chain, not, not a sort of easy process. And some people, again, I think this goes back to maintenance, had questions about what if there's not enough money to maintain? The state law clearly outlines ways and means for assessments, collecting money, spending money, providing a reserve, even so far as meaning individual property owners, unit owners in this space in order that the association may continue to function. These were the primary questions that we had initially. These were shared at the community engagement night. Are there any questions or comments on these aspects of condominiumization? I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand or unmute, so I do want to touch on a few questions that Curval so kindly sent to us ahead of time. Is the condo ownership applicable to the multifamily developments? Or will ADUs and single-family residents be allowed to form a condominium? The smaller units would be allowed to form a condominium. So it broadens our scope here. There are some advantages to that. Those accessory dwelling units are smaller units, ninety-nine percent of the time than the single-family dwelling. And a smaller unit typically sells for less than a larger unit. And that diversifies the number of units available. It diversifies the type of units that are available, and ideally, it'll diversify the range of cost purchasing those units. What impact will the proposed amendments have on the availability of rentals, which are more accessible to those in the workforce than condominiums? Could one of the results of the proposal, if enacted, be reduction of rentals? Yes, I think that could be option for ADUs converting into condominiums. At the same time, it's important to take note of all the additional rentals that have been added to the community. We have the two hundred units behind Safeway, and we'll have the three hundred and sixty-eight units coming online. And it doesn't remove them from the option of being a rental. It just provides an option for them to become owner units. Curval, would you like to chat about that for a minute or have more of a question?
Yeah, it was just the, the other part of the question was the existing multifamily apartments in Leavenworth, which assumably, since they're older units, might be more affordable. So if those were to go condo, it could displace some residents who have reasonable rent because the the projects that you mentioned, the units behind Safeway, and then the new Leavenworth Meadows are market rate rentals. They're not, you know, affordable, they're not going to be affordable to a large portion of residents in Leavenworth. So I guess that becomes really important for the existing multifamily that we have, which isn't a lot, but there, there are several that if those get converted to condos, it really could displace some some residents that won't have another option.
Yes, thank you. I, I also was talking with our buildings division about the fact that condominiums typically have to have fire separation. So there is some discussion about, you know, would those requirements include the feasibility of people converting those older dwellings into condominiums? So we're still having those discussions in House Palin.
I just wanted to add a comment, and I appreciate the planning commission taking this up. Upper Valley Men, we're looking at building a duplex on the west end of town on a six thousand square foot residential lot. That's, that's allowed outright under city code. But we don't have the option to sell those individual units to individual buyers. We only have the option to rent those to two individual renters. And so for us, this is affordable housing across the board, whether we do it as rentals or as homeownership. But we would like to have the option to be able to sell those individual units to individual buyers that wouldn't have other options in the market for homeownership opportunities. So we would support this, this move to be able to condominiumize, especially if it's available to, up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI affordable housing, affordable homeownership. So just wanted to throw out another scenario of how this might be used to support affordable homeownership opportunities in, in the area.
Thank you, Palin. And I'll note too that the proposed amendment does not regulate housing income. It's just a land action. So anybody only land will take advantage of this opportunity if it is adopted. We have another question here too. Is there a reason for proceeding with this prior to completing the analysis and possible adoption of inclusionary zoning? No, inclusionary zoning is just taking longer to discuss. And since this was submitted as a request by an individual, they pay a fee. There's timelines for processing applications to ensure that things are done in a timely manner. So we were pretty close to taking on this topic anyway, but now we did move to bump it up on the agenda because it was an actual application submitted, a request for review. And I also wanted to note that inclusionary zoning is very different tool in the toolbox of affordable housing. It does not apply to land divisions. It's about construction and ownership and rentals, but not land divisions, as far as I'm aware. I haven't seen that as an option. So they have different benefits between the two. I'm sorry, I don't know your actual name. You have your hand raised?
Yeah, yeah, it's Brian. I don't know why it has owl brainer up there, but you can, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Couple of things. Okay, couple of things, um. One that you just mentioned that this got moved up because of an application, uh, by Pete. To turn his duplex into condominiums. Um, so this ordinance, city ordinance, has been around since two thousand and eighteen. So it's not like this just came out and it's such a sweet deal that we decided to jump on it. Um, the, one of the comments that I have is that we jumped right into. How all of this works and sort of skipped over how the community feels about it in general. Having condos in what is the last residential area in Leavenworth. We have condos in other parts of town, uh, but the, the community, the people that live here in this core. Residential area are almost unanimously against this, they don't want condos. In the residential areas, we want houses, we want homes, uh, school enrollment is down. We need families to move here, families don't move into condominiums, families want a house. Another point is that, let's, let's have a hypothetical that my mom lives in a duplex. And has a pretty good rent. Uh, the fact that Pete applied to have his building go condo. Tells you that there is an advantage to the developer to go condo. Otherwise, he wouldn't have done it. I mean, he, he, he didn't do that for the community, he did it because it is going to be easier for him to sell. Four separate units. As, and when you think about that, I, I've asked friends. Uh, that are, that, that own buildings, ADUs, uh, duplexes. What's the advantage to going duplex? Well, you're selling two units instead of one. If you have a house in an ADU right now and you want to sell it, you sell it as one property. If you go condo, you have two properties, you get more money. Um, but back to the case of like my mom living in a duplex. She can walk to my house right now, if her duplex goes condo. She cannot afford to buy it, even though she would have first option, she's forced to move. She's not really wanting to move. Uh, moving is a big deal to someone in their eighties. He, so the question rose earlier, are we going to be losing rentals? We could very easily be losing a lot of rentals, and it's not like we have a glut. You said we have some coming up, but the price on those is still outrageous, so, uh, I, I just want to point out that. The, the community is against this in the residential area. Um, I could see redrawing the residential area, you know, everything north of Pine is obviously. Uh, an area where these types of buildings would fit in, this type of stuff, but. We, we need to leave a downtown core or, or a residential area where. It's houses, it's homes, it's, it's, it's people living there, um, one last point is that. One of the things that we have been against is having wealthy Seattleites. Come over here and buy second homes. One of the disadvantages of buying a second home over here for someone is that while they're not here, it's not taken care of. Well, if you start turning all these ADUs and stuff into, uh, condominiums that can be purchased. That's ideal for someone to, from Seattle to buy, because then their property is managed while they're gone. They can pop in three times a year, four times a year, whatever, they have the money to do that, so they will be. Most likely one of the prime buyers of this. A first time homeowner, homeownership is different than condo ownership, so a first time buyer. Stepping into something where the description of a condominium is a hundred and eighty-five pages. It's a little different than buying a house that's yours where you can control stuff. Um, I, I just. I guess that's most of the points I want to make, but none of them have been made so far.
Thanks, Brian, I wanted to go to Travis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll throw my camera on here at work, um, I, I hear you, Brian, and, um. I, I think that it's, when you talk about a community or a street or several streets that don't want this, I mean, you, you, there's no denying that. I think that, um, I think that's important to consider. I just want to clarify that a condo, I live in a condo. I live on Tenth and Commercial, I live two blocks away from the village, like I live in a, a residential area. I'm condo A and my neighbor behind me is condo B, and I'm also a renter. So I just don't want there to be confusion of what a condo is or means, um. My neighbor Thorn is eighty-seven years old, I was in Las Vegas with, with my wife. Couple months ago, he was down there working on his book and we met for lunch, I take his mail to him in the winter because he's on the alley. We're good neighbors and yes, he's like right in my backyard, but we both have these really nice. Two thousand square foot homes that are condos, um, I just, I just want to clarify that. That also that forty percent of the inventory in Leavenworth is unoccupied. And so when you talk about West Siders buying condos to. To rent out or Airbnb or I'm not sure, I think we need more rentals for people like me or. People that can't afford a house, but they can't afford rent, um, I think condo is just one of those other tools. Um, and I'm an advocate for clarity on what a condo is, not for not listening to the street and people that don't want. Um, different things in their neighborhood, for sure, I just want to be very clear on that, I'm, I'm not an advocate for that. I am an advocate for describing what a condo is, and, um, I live in one, so that's it.
Thanks, Travis, Steve, your answer?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, uh, I just wanted to chime in, um, to say, I live in this community. And I am not against condos or this provision. Um, I live in a part of town that backs up to one of the few multifamily districts we have in town where condos are currently allowed. And I can tell you that if you were to walk down that street, you would not be able to tell which buildings were condominiums or not. They can be synonymous with the look of single family houses, with the look of apartments, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I also want to point out, um, that condos are. Probably the only tool that I know of to create homeownership options that are. Actually affordable for people, so, um, you know, yes, someone then has, you know. Or a, a developer, for example, could have two units to sell, but he would be able to sell, he or she would be able to sell them for, uh. Less dollars than, um, the two together, which is what we have now, right? So if, if someone builds two units, you would have to sell that as two units on one property. And only someone with enough money to afford two, oh, two homes could then afford that property. Creating condos would allow, um, would allow that cost to be split between two different homeowners and allow two homeowners to build equity. Over time as well, it's a, it's like the perfect starter home, um, model for, for people in town trying to. Trying to make their housing permanent. Um, the other thing I wanted to add is, is that families absolutely do move into condos, they also move into and live in apartments. There are plenty of families moving, living in the apartments behind Safeway while looking for homes to buy, for example. Um, so there is not, um, I think we need to get away from. Some idea that families only live in houses with a yard, that's not the reality today with the, the cost of, of houses. And especially the cost of houses here, we just need places for people to live, that's it, um, and this, this helps, helps with that.
Can I interject just briefly?
Yeah.
Um, one of the questions was, will this amendment allow cottage thousands to become condos? And the answer is yes, so. Whether we do a unit lots subdivision or each little cottage house with that a portion of land or condominiums. With, uh, underlying lands or common ownership, we'll be dwelling in certain businesses, um. That is a, a benefit of this program, those cottage dwellers could become, they could live in condos. And I think that ties into what you were saying to about houses.
Yeah, yeah. I had just one, one more point I wanted to make, um, which is that, um. This, this topic of condos, uh, allowing condos in residential districts has been on the planning commission docket for years and years and years. And never, never made it to full discussion, so the fact, I think, I, I just want to point out the fact that a, a developer has kind of. Um, pushed it to, to be discussed, um, shouldn't count against. Uh, the fact that it has been on the docket and a topic for discussion for years, that just hasn't happened yet. Um, and, and also related to that, because something benefits or could benefit a developer. Does not necessarily make it evil or bad, it can also benefit people in town at the same time. And just because two people are benefiting or two groups are benefiting from something doesn't make it bad, so I just want to point that out that. Um, the idea that developers are inherently evil and that if something benefits a developer, that it is inherently evil. Or bad, um, should, should be, um, disregarded. So that's all I've got to say, thank you.
All right, before we go to more comments, I'm going to take a minute to share my screen again, uh, what I am sharing is. A summary of House Bill thirteen thirty-seven. This is a summary from the MRSC group, municipal research group. And that would make the link available, but you can also hopefully read it on your screen. This house bill that was passed does require us as a city within six months of our periodic update. So that would be by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six to permit. Uh, specifically condominium sales. Local governments may not prohibit the sale or other bans of condominium units independently of a principal unit. Solely on the grounds that the condominium was originally built as a main unit. So state law is, you know, requiring us to look at these, uh, options and consider them. So in addition to, you know, Leavenworth's forward thinking of having this on its docket for quite some time. Um, and thinking about it, the state has also been thinking about it and has made changes. This bill also does require jurisdictions regardless of size or population. These are the items where we're required to have, um, two ADUs per lot must be allowed in all. Growth areas in addition to the principal unit. So there's some standards there for that. What we're specifically looking at is RCW thirty-six ninety, which is this common interest communities. Uh, and, and then this same regulation, uh, talks specifically about common interest communities, which are condominiums. And they cannot prohibit it, uh, or create covenants or restrictions that would limit the constructions of ADUs. So it's, well, this whole cycle is kind of the whole circle view of, of how this is playing out. I wanted to share that before I got to my dead, hard deadline and having to step away. Um, let's see, Maggie, are you still on with us? Okay, Drew, you have your hands up, I'm going to make you the host. And I am going to step away, um, from you, are you up for that, Drew?
Yeah, no problem.
You're able to do that, okay? Thank you, Drew, and I'll look forward to the recording and hearing with those discussions. Uh, Drew, your handles up next if you wanted to go ahead and share your thoughts.
Great, uh, thanks a little, so, yeah, I just wanted to touch on a couple of points, obviously, we've been, uh, in discussion with the planning commission. For a number of months now on this topic, um, I appreciate, uh, the comments from, from Travis and. Uh, from Stephen that, you know, that when we think about this word condo, that it, it really isn't only large apartment buildings. Uh, and, and really the use case that, that comes to mind the most when we talk about this. Is not on the development side as much as it is on the existing inventory, uh, existing duplexes or potentially houses with an ADU. Uh, and looking at how we can, you know, use a tool like this to create more housing diversity. Uh, and create more opportunities for, for different scales of housing. Uh, you know, right now, a current use case, if you have a duplex, it can only be one owner and that only, that owner has the option to. Obviously live in, in one unit and rent out one or rent out both units. Um, by splitting that up and by making a condo, you now allow two people to own that same building. Uh, and to me, that's, that's more people given access to own a home in Leavenworth. Uh, and in theory, due to the common scale, you would be at a cheaper rate than trying to purchase the entire unit. And rely on rental income, uh, for the, the other portion of the mortgage. Um, so really, the use case standpoint, we don't see this really something that is going to be super, uh, enticing for, for developers. To, to rush into, in fact, the only proposed use case for development that, that we've heard so far that seems any what. Uh, relevant would be from Upper Valley Mend, um, and so that's why, you know, so on, from our review on the planning commission. At least in my personal opinion, um, this is, is a powerful tool for us that puts us in the toolbox, uh, for more diversity in housing. And more different scale of ownership, um, versus our current model, which requires just one owner to own multiple, uh, units. So just wanted to put that out there and, and share my thoughts and happy to move on to the next question, I believe, Curval, you're next.
Yeah, I just, um, whoops, trying to start my video, okay, I think we just need to differentiate. Between existing structures that are already built. And that have renters in them and that those people being displaced. Um, because I think that is a real concern, it's a different issue if something new is being built. That isn't housing anyone, um, I agree that those might be really good opportunities. For someone to buy, uh, because a condo would be in a lot of cases, depending on the square footage. Cheaper than a house, but I, I think we really need to keep in mind if we're converting. Existing dwelling units, whether it's an ADU or a duplex or a multifamily. That are rentals into condos, that the displacement of existing renters is a serious concern. Uh, because they may not be able to find another place that's. Uh, you know, that has rent at the same, the same level, so I just think that. That we need to differentiate between new construction and conversion of existing units.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a good point, uh, obviously it is a concern, it's something that we look at, the totality, the impact of the project, but ultimately. The, the state law kind of supersedes what we can tell the existing owners. So really, this is something that is coming down the pipe that we have to adapt in some way, shape or form. Um, and it's been really restrictive on, on what we can, you know, clarified from a existing ownership to. A new development and who can do what, um, but you, you, it's a good point, it's something that we've definitely thought about, you know, that there is the opportunity. Or the potential that there would be some displacement, um, but when you look at the, uh, the, the net, net result. And, and the ability for more people to own a home, I think that's ultimately the goal, uh, is the number one, you know, ability for. Anyone to develop any wealth generation is, is real estate ownership, and so we really create the most amount of opportunities for that to happen. And so we really want to create the most amount of opportunities for that to happen. Sorry, can you raise your hand and I'll call you next? Is there another question?
Hello, this is uh, Brian Roy. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yes, uh, I think there's, there's one other point I'd like to make on this. And again, there's, there's a lot of good points, pros and cons for this, but um, the one I haven't mentioned is sort of the elephant in the room from my perspective, and that is um, someone mentioned earlier that there's an example of a street here in Leavenworth where you would be hard pressed to identify what's a condo versus what's a house and an ADU. Uh, and maybe that's an example of condos done right. Um, but I live on Stafford Street and I know that this has come up before and Brian Prey mentioned it a little earlier in his call, but um, I think it's important to really identify what condos can look like. I mean, they have to fit in to the residential neighborhoods in which they're being placed and there's ways to do that. Clearly, what was built on Stafford Street does not fit in. And I would challenge any planning committee member to take a look at that and say, yes, that's a beautiful thing and I wouldn't mind having that next to my house. And until we address that issue, I think we're leaving ourselves sort of exposed here to developers to take the easy way out in creating some of these condos. And again, I'm not against condos. I, I, I see pros to those just as I see cons, but how we do it and how we go about providing affordable housing or additional housing for first time buyers, I think is critical. And, and if we don't find a way to prevent what was built on Stafford Street from happening on many other streets in, in um, Leavenworth, we're going to lose that residential feel. I think there's a better way to do it and I think that's the challenge for the planning committee. And I would ask you to do that and be honest. Take a look at what was built on Stafford Street and say, would I allow this to be built next to my own house? I would challenge you. I don't think any of you would say yes. And that's the only additional point I'd like to add. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Brian. Uh, Zeke?
Looks like.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I did want to make up a point there that I think that as Caitlin brought up and, and uh, uh, Travis brought up, this is a viable way to provide single home ownership uh, for sure. I, but I do think I'm somewhat wary on how we formulate this, bring up a, a way to make this happen. Uh, because I think we have to be careful for a couple of reasons that might have already been mentioned. First is that what Curville mentioned about the displacement thing, I, and the second thing is about folks from Seattle buying these things because they are such a good deal. Uh, and I know we don't have that can, kind of control on who gets to buy what. But I think we have to worry of that because we do, we just need to be, it'd be a heck of a situation that if we um, in this process of trying to create homeownership, which it pro, it will. But in that process, we displace people out of rentals who can't afford to make that purchase uh, as first time offer, you know, first right, first time rights to buy it. And we also provide another avenue for more second homes from folks who don't live here year round because the price is so well. So I'm, I do not know how exactly the planning commission, we can, whether it's, we allow zones where this happens in or, or how we go about it, but I'm, uh, because I, this is a possible tool for true homeownership. But I think we can't ignore the fact or how Brian just mentioned that these need to fit into the, they do need to fit into the landscape of the neighborhood. So as we move forward with this, which I think we should, we can't escape the fact or ignore the fact of these other repercussions that uh, are not what we want. Displacement, more second homeowners uh, that don't live for year round and buildings that don't fit into the neighborhood landscape. So um, that's what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Zeke. Uh, Stacy?
Yeah, there we go. Um, really good points here. I just, um, I do want to raise um, kind of a, a through line I'm hearing in this discussion is that somehow condos equate to affordability. And what we have seen with the Stafford Street example is, you know, the, the sale price of those were, I think for two units, one point four seven million. Uh, so that broke down to seven hundred and thirty-five thousand a unit. Um, to me, whether or not you're on the west side or east side, that's not quote unquote affordable. So um, I would just challenge the planning committee to um, think about how, you know, if the goal is truly to provide affordable housing is to focus on that. And I, I really like the mend idea. But I think it's something that would need to be managed carefully so that we do actually see the affordability that I think we all want to see in this community. That's my two cents.
Thanks, Stacy. Curville?
Um, that was why I put in one of my questions to Lilith and she did allude to it of getting the inclusionary zoning ordinance in place before we do this. And she said it wouldn't apply to land divisions, but a lot of condos could be built that wouldn't necessarily be land divisions. Like if you put um, like a two unit, built a two unit condo, it seems like you could require one of them to be affordable. But I just, I think there is a chicken and egg issue here that's really important to look at. The inclusionary zoning ordinance, whenever we get it, will require the option of the city having a certain percentage of new construction be affordable. And I, I, I think that should be in place before we do the condo um, ordinance or we may lose some opportunities for, for actually creating affordable housing. Cause I agree with Stacy, a lot of what's been built or may be built is not going to be affordable. It may be some of the existing, you know, very small units might be. Um, but um, there we get into the displacement issue. So again, I just, I, I really like, would hope the planning commission would have a thorough discussion of what the interface is between an inclusionary zoning program and how it relates to allowing the condominium um, proposal to go through.
Great, thank you, Curville. Any other comments at this time? Yeah, Sharon.
Not sure what's going to come out of my mouth, so I need to be careful. I feel like I need to raise the flag of the single family homeowner. Um, I know that as life rolls on and the years roll on, that there needs to be changes. And I'm, I'm sad that these changes weren't made several years back so that there were some, but, but nobody knew this was coming like it is, but um, I, I don't know, I feel like a single family homes are endangered species. And um, what Brian Prey said about the community and how they feel about things, I think that has to be taken into huge consideration and listened to. If nothing else, listen to the, the people. I'm not sure how we can get them somewhere um, in a group, but I think that effort needs to be made so we actually are hearing, hearing everything. And not, not just having to say that we know of all the, of tons of people that don't want this. We need to hear from, from everybody. This is a big step and um, a lot of it's hard to understand. And so um, you know, the, I remember the best planning commission thing that I ever could remember was people didn't understand what was going on. They had a big meeting with everybody there. It was like a workshop. I think it was called a workshop. And so everybody left there knowing what was going on, what could go on. And maybe a lot of minds were even changed from coming in uh, thinking one way and going out thinking another way. But I think that needs to happen because I think this is a huge move. Um, however, however it goes. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sharon. Any other comments at this time? Alright, well, if there's no other comments, we will uh, take this recording for the planning commission members that were able to attend today. Uh, and to make sure that they have a chance to review the comments and, and make sure it's incorporated uh, into our discussion uh, in our next meeting in, in first week of June. Um, and there are no other questions, then I think we'll go ahead and adjourn today's call.
Thanks, Drew.
Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Drew.
Thanks, Drew.
Yep, thanks a lot, Drew.